Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being video recorded and also being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, which is www.penfield.org, also on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel 1303, and on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Penfield TV in your app store, and it is free. If anyone would like to address the board tonight on any public hearing matter, there's going to be a specific opportunity to do that. What will happen is we'll call the applicant up to the table. Applicant will go through the presentation with some guidance and direction and questions from the board, and then we'll ask for comment. People in the audience, people on the phone, and people can submit electronic comments as well. You can, if you're watching from home or listening from home, you can call 340. Well, this number here, 340-8771 with a comment, or again, you could submit a comment electronically at that same website, penfield.org. Excuse me. Every month, we like to point out that we think that town does a really good job of making sure people in the town and other areas of this county know what's on our agenda, so that if they want to come in and speak about something, they can do that. How does a town do that? Well, the first thing the town does is send postcards to surrounding property owners near the applicant property. The town makes the applicant, a lot of you, post the signs on the property that says, hey, this property is under review. If you have any questions, call. Town posts the agenda on the website and here at Town Hall. We like when that happens because we want to be able to do our job with full input from anybody that has any comments about the application. So, we will start tonight with our work session, which is going to take care of some prior meetings that are tabled, and then some approval of minutes, you know, that sort of thing. And then we will get into tonight's new applications. The public hearings, as I said, will ask folks to come up and give us name and address, and then go through the application. And that being said, I ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, so we'll go into the work session, and the, well, the second item, I guess, is approval of the minutes from June 13th.
I make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is we do have one tabled application that's been on our agenda for quite some time, but we know the applicant's working hard to try to, at both this board and planning board. So come on, why don't you come on up. I know you want to give us an update, a brief and concise update, but an update nonetheless. And we're going to probably end up tabled in this one again. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
So I have some good news for you.
Well, and for you.
And for me, yes.
Okay.
For all of us. We have a parking agreement.
Great.
Name and address?
It's all drafted up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Can you give us your name and address again?
Greg Grillo, 1676 Penfield Road.
Thank you. Thanks, Heidi.
So, we have our three-year lease agreement for 37 parking spots.
Good.
In the Plaza. I have the draft. Dave has the final copy. We met Sunday. He's good with it.
Has it been signed?
Possibly.
Oh, well, did you sign it?
No, the owner of the property did.
Okay. On your behalf, I guess, or on the business's behalf. And then Mr. Speed, he's going to sign it as well.
Yes, yeah, he has the copy.
Okay. All right. Well, as soon as we have a signed version of that, get that to us, just a copy. Obviously, you can keep the original. And then what's happening with planning board?
So, they gave me a list of things to include on a final site plan.
Okay.
So I gave that to O'Neil Rodak, the list of things that needed to be done, and I'm just waiting to receive that final copy from them.
All right. Go ahead. Do you have some questions?
Yeah, did the fire marshal give you your occupancy yet?
So I did reach out to him. I did not get a response as far as, like, final occupancy. With the lease, we would have 51 parking spots, and then two handicap spots with unloading. And I'm asking for an occupancy of 70 guests with that number of parking spots, and that's the variance I'm asking for.
Okay. Andy, are you aware of all of these developments prior to right now?
Yeah, so we were just waiting for more of a formal indication of what the occupancy of the building will be, because that's how we determine how much parking is, and that's the number you need to determine how much of variance is going to be considered.
Okay.
So I need to, I need to work out the details. I'll recalculate what the minimum parking is, so we got that number to go with.
Great. And I, I don't know that it's as crucial as it was, but I'm kind of wondering why we haven't been able to have a meeting with the fire marshal. Maybe you know, maybe you don't know, but it's not so much a meeting as it is a determination of occupancy. Now, if you have a number that's, I guess, lower than the occupancy, then, you know, we can condition it.
Yeah, the fire marshal's agreed, as long as the occupancy doesn't exceed what's allowed by the code, which it won't, the fire marshal has the authority to limit the building to that occupancy.
And we could as well, with a parking variance.
Well, the fire marshal needs to establish what the maximum occupancy of the building is.
Sure, yeah.
And once we get that, which sounds like we have, then we can figure out what the parking is and how much of the variance.
And then we can go from there. So we should, fingers crossed, we should be able to resolve this at the next meeting. Get that written, signed agreement.
Yep.
I'd like to see it. But you want it, you know? I just need to look at it once, and then I'm happy. Okay?
That will be in by next meeting. He just picked it up Sunday, so that's, it's the final stage for that.
And then you're working on more detailed site plan for planning.
Yes.
Now, the planning department is still, still needs to review the site plan.
Sure.
To approve that.
Okay, but I think if we have the info that we need, we can, no reason why we can't move forward. All right? Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right. Good seeing you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, on this matter, I'm going to make a motion to continue to table for the reasons previously tabled. All right, motion to table, and a second by George. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if anybody has any questions for clarification on any of tonight's new applications.
I don't know.
I don't?
No.
Nope? All right, well, then let's move right into the public hearings and start right with number one.
Ralph Robleski, 1463 Shoe Craft Road, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow taller screen plantings within 20 feet of the right-of-way line than allowed under Section 250-7.1-1 of the code at 1463 Shoe Craft Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Ralph and Patricia Robleski, and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 109.07-1-20. This is application number 23Z-0040.
All right, maybe we have your name and address, please?
Hi, Ralph Robleski, 1463 Shoe Craft Road.
All right, and before we get into your application, I don't know if I said this before, but I should have if I didn't, that is, everybody here has submitted a really good written application. The boards has gone through them, looked at the aerial maps, the surveys, gone by the property if necessary. So we find it efficient for the board to sort of walk the applicant through the process, and that's not meant to curtail any conversation or any presentation. It just makes things go quicker, to be honest with you. So that's sort of the style that we'll follow tonight. So, and that applies to everybody. So I'm sorry, but, yeah, we'll walk you through it now, then. So, I think I've been doing this for 20, 25 years, and I've never, I never knew that you couldn't have plantings over a certain height in a right-of-way. But we, that is a rule, for whatever reason. So I understand that you had a row of evergreens, sort of covering, shielding, buffering, whatever term you want to use, a wood pile, and a trailer of some sort, or?
Yep, yep.
And the evergreens died.
They all had needle cast disease, yep, so they were dying.
Right. So you're here because you want to replace them, so you can continue to shield the view, you know, neighbors' view, people driving by, they're going to see trees rather than the wood pile and a trailer.
That's basically it.
And you're here complying with the law. So the vegetation you're putting in is going to be higher than three feet, and therefore...
It's going to be arborvitae's.
Yeah, which can grow pretty tall.
Yeah.
All right, so I only have one question to ask you, and that is, can you move the wood pile and the trailer somewhere else where you wouldn't need a variance?
Well, we have no, now it's completely open.
Yeah.
Just like one big...
That's a good picture of it, right there.
So, yeah, so Lisa lives behind us, so we'd like to get the trail out of her view, and every place put the garbage can, and, you know, just kind of basic stuff. And she held the wood pile, so, I mean, it's been there for 30 years, and at my age, I'm not moving it. Sorry.
All righty.
But anyways, that's, we just think it would look nice, and, you know, trying to dress it up for neighbors. Coming down the street, the wood pile, the closest corners from the sun of the road's 37 feet from the sun of the road, so it's into that 30 to 50 foot, where the three-foot rule comes into play. So, the arborvitae's is going to look, we just think it's going to look nice and fill it all in nicely.
All right, and I know you had an email from a neighbor, Mr. Leader. He's the trustee of a trust that owns the house next door, and he's saying he's all in favor of this, so.
Okay.
I don't even know if you saw that, but it was a good email.
No, no.
Okay, I'll ask if anybody on the board has any other questions.
I assume the answer will be no, but will this obstruct any view coming in or out of the driveway?
So that's, yeah, so anyways, the evergreens that were there, they were like 35, 30 feet in diameter, so the arborvitae's are going to be upright next to the back of the fence that's there now. So I would say it's 100% better from what my, when I take a dog for a walk, when I come down, it's like, it's really opened up quite a bit from what it was.
Okay. Anything?
You asked, Laura, is the question I was going to ask, so.
All right, I don't see anybody that has called in or submitted an electronic comment, so I'll open it up to the folks here. Anybody care to speak about this application? No? Okay, so we're going to move to consider it. The first thing we have to do is, the environmental law in New York State requires us to make certain environmental findings, so I'm going to move that we declare this a type-two action under Seeker, requiring no further action.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on the environmental? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And now on the merits, I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance. It's a pretty simple one. Property's been like that for quite some time. He's actually keeping it up very nice, and he's really doing this as much for the benefit of his neighbors and other members of the community as himself, maybe more so. So I think it's a good application, a simple one, and that's my motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, number two.
Justin and Amy Whitman, 777 John Glenn Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580, request approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.7-C1A of the code to allow the continued operation of an existing restaurant, All-Star Pizza, by a new operator-owner at 1632 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by 1628 Penfield Road LLC and is zoned general business. This is application number 23Z-0041.
Okay. If we can have your names and addresses for the record, please.
Justin Whitman, 1628 Penfield Road.
And Amy Whitman.
Same address.
Same address, yeah.
That's good.
Well, thanks so much for submitting such a thorough application. You really did a great job. So you're purchasing the pizza place. Any changes? Tell me about what your plans are.
Nothing, just carrying on as-is. You know, I've worked there for the last seven years now, so just going to continue on.
And no changes to the in-grass, e-grass, all of that's going to stay the same?
Yep.
Hours of operations?
Still the same.
Any changes to, are you going to add alcohol to your menu at any point?
Late.
Any concerns that you're aware from the previous owner with any traffic, or parking, or lighting?
No.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the board? This is another tough one. I don't, again, nobody's called in on this. I don't have any electronic comments, and in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, so again, you're, as Laura said, your application's thorough, contains all the items that you're going to do, we're going to, when we approve this, all of your representations in the documents, that's what we'll use. If anything changes, for whatever reason, call Andy, we'll address that.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go with the Seeker.
Yes, I make a motion that this request is a type-two action pursuant to Seeker, requiring no further action.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the merits.
I would make a motion to approve continuing operations as-is, as outlined in the application. They're not making any substantial changes to the pizza shop. That's not had any issues before, so I see no reason why we wouldn't...
Second.
...do this.
All right, a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You bring us any samples of the pizza?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we got, we got donuts or something.
Third Thursday of every month, we're here. All right, bye-bye. Number three, moving right along.
Gary Salvion, 11 Rolling Meadows Way, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a shed with less side setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code, and less rear setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 11 Rolling Meadows Way. The property is currently or formerly owned by Gary and Tammy Salvion, and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 124.16-2-32. This is application number 23Z-0042.
Okay, maybe we have your name and address.
Sure, Gary Salvion, 11 Rolling Meadows Way.
All right.
Great. Well, Gary, thank you so much for the application. As previously stated, we appreciate when they're thorough, so it makes the process a little streamlined. I did note that you, there was some correspondence back and forth to validate the, Andy, is that correct to validate that we changed from, I think, five to three on the one?
Yeah, Mr. Salvion didn't realize that he needed the second setback variance, so.
Gotcha. Okay, and that's been, that's all thoroughly documented at this point, updated application, so thank you for that as well. So talk to me a little bit about, actually, I have two questions on this.
Sure.
You know, based on, I did take a look at the outline of the property and the visuals, but is there any way you could even bring it in a little bit more to lower either of those? I mean, if not both, but maybe one of the variances, so we could limit the amount of variances necessary?
So, sure, I could. That's kind of why I'm here, is so that I don't have to, because it's not a very deep backyard, and so there's actually a patio there that's not reflected in that photograph, but it doesn't come out for much farther. But anyway, that's kind of our space for any recreation that we have in the backyard, and by bringing that out, so if I were to go according to code, it would be in my, you know, 20 feet into the property, and it would kind of cut off that area we like to call a bad mitten or bocce, or things like that. And it's, just to kind of allow us as much room as possible to use that space. I did speak with the neighbor behind us, because that's really the property that would be most impacted, the one that was within three feet. They're fairly new, they're probably about a year, and I spoke with Julie, I think, I can't remember the last name, but Julie, and she said we have, they have no problems at all. In fact, they kind of liked it, because those trees are a little bit thinner there, and they have a pool in the back, and that would offer even more privacy between the two properties.
Gotcha, so that, yeah, you anticipated my second question, which was, did you get a chance to speak to the neighbors? How about the one on the other side?
I did, I did, yes. And initially, he was, I never spoke to him before that. He initiated the conversation. That was my fault, so I think he was disappointed that I didn't approach him first. I just assumed it wasn't, I mean, it's so far from this property and area he doesn't use. But nonetheless, after discussion, he was fine with that, and he agreed that there was no concern on his part.
Gotcha. So those are really the two questions I had. Dan or Laura had any additional questions?
Laura, anything?
What are you going to start at? Typical storage stuff?
Yeah, so we have a shed now, and that's like our, so in the summer, our snow blower goes in there, shovels and all that, extra hoses, because, you know, those little shelters you can, like, expand out and all that. We've got a couple of those, planters that we're not using, or things like that, you know, so, and then stuff in the garage, that's another thing, like, things like the generator, I'd rather not store that, and, you know, just things that give us a little more space in our garage, so that we can use that to its utmost as well. Just trying to maximize the utility of our space.
And the construction material is going to match the house?
Yeah.
There was just a picture of it up there.
Yeah, very similar. It's, yeah, it's not a cheap shed.
Okay.
By any means, so.
All right. It's a little bit of an aside here, Andy, but, so, this town, we have a, we have a 10-foot setback for sheds.
Right, yes.
And as this gentleman said, most people, when they put sheds up in, you know, half-acre lots, or whatever side, you know, they want to save their backyard, totally understandable. But one of the reasons for setback is safety, you know, so you don't have four sheds all in the corner.
Right, right.
And being able to maintain them, keep them in good shape. But I do wonder, because we have so many shed applications over the years, whether, do you, is there any consideration for rethinking that 10-foot that you're aware of? I know it's a town board thing.
Not that I'm aware, but I can say that generally, when the sides of, sides and roofs of the property contain, a lot of times, that's where the utilities are run, storm sewers and that sort of thing.
Oh, that's true, too. That's true.
And a typical easement is 10 feet.
Drainage, ditches even, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well, I tried.
That does raise a good question, if they're, if you're aware of anything from a standpoint of, there's no, there's no easements notated on that property, right?
On the survey, no.
There's no utilities or anything that run through that?
I don't, I'm not aware of any, but honestly, I can't tell you. I know that, I don't believe there's any sewer, because the current shed, if you look in the photograph, on the north side of the property, there's that, that is actually slightly over the sewer easement. When we bought the property, it was there already, and I don't think it was, an issue was made of it, because it's been there, and it's ever so slightly on there. I mean, it's really insignificant, so, and I would think the power would come from the south, southwest corner next to the driveway, because there's a transformer there.
Yep, that makes sense. Okay. Then I don't have any further questions at this point. Dan?
Okay. I don't see that anyone's called in on this, or sent in a...
The one, the one public comment that we did get previously, that's been addressed, you said?
My neighbor to the south.
Yeah.
Probably, Mr. Frankie?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, he and I spoke.
There was just, I think, a little confusion on...
Yeah, that was my lack of communication with him. It's just, yeah, it's simple.
I think there was something with the website, too, wasn't there? Whatever. It's resolved.
It's resolved.
Okay, well, let's go with the Seeker, then.
Yeah, in regards...
Oh, I'm sorry, anyone in the, I shouldn't assume. Anyone in the audience want to speak about this? Okay.
Well, in regards to the Seeker, I would say this is a type-two, requiring no further action.
I will second that. All right, so we have a motion under Seeker to declare it a type-two action, in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, in regards to the application, I would recommend approval. The variances aren't excessive. He's talked to all the property owners that would be impacted by this. While it is self-created, it is in his effort to maximize the use of his property, which of course, you know, makes sense, so based on that, I would recommend approval.
Second.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is the support of the neighbors as well, because, you know, it's a pretty important factor for area variances, so it's good that you have that. I have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Number four, please.
Earl Rogalski, 45 Wheelock Road, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow the construction of a front porch with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 45 Wheelock Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Earl Antara Rogalski, and is zoned R-1-15, SBL number 139.06-3-46. This is application number 23Z-0043.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Earl Rogalski, 45 Wheelock Road.
Okay.
Earl, as stated earlier to the other resources, thank you very much for the application. It was thorough. I did take a quick drive-by, because I was interested, the way the property was shaped. I thought, okay, I got to see that myself. Yet it is a unique situation with the shape of the property, so I can see what you're up against, no matter how you structured that porch, you were going to probably require some level, so.
Yeah, the existing house is actually right about the 10-foot from the, from the property line. It's really close.
Yeah, yeah, got it. We've, we've all, to a certain extent, been grandfathered with some of our older homes on, on some of that. So if you could walk me through a little bit about the size and use of the porch, a couple of questions on lighting, anything that would be pointed out on the street?
Okay, yeah, sure. The size of the structure would be an eight-by-40, so eight, eight, eight feet deep, and then 40 feet across the front of the house. It would be used for just enjoyment. Our one neighbor to the right is very excited about this, because she wants to come over and enjoy the porch with us. But just help us a little bit with the curb appeal as well, give us a more, you know, entertainment space in the front. We're fortunate, because we've got a really nice backyard, but it doesn't allow us to interact with our neighbors.
Gotcha. And, you know, the second part of that question was, is any light fixtures, anything like that, that would, that would be added, that would be visible from the street?
No, we would use the existing light fixtures on the front of the house.
Gotcha. Okay, and as always, we asked, from a mitigation standpoint, is there any possibility of you being able to perhaps shorten the overall length of the porch by the current variance request?
Yeah, we...
And if not, why, why wouldn't you?
We could shorten it, but then the optics and the balance of the house would just We could shorten it, but then the optics and the balance of the house would just be out of proportion, so we wouldn't do it at all.
No, makes sense, makes sense. Okay, that is really the only two questions I had, I mean, is, I'm assuming that the construction will match the house and all the rest of that, so.
Yeah, it would be, so part of it would be, the front garage door would change as well, and then the front siding would be upgraded as well, to new siding, would be the same siding, same color siding, but the rest of it would be a traditional center entry, white, colonial with black trim.
Perfect. And you've already spoken to your neighbors, they're excited about it, and there, Andy, there were some?
Yeah, we had a couple.
Couple emails.
Yeah, both neighbors adjacent, they've submitted written authorization or approval, if you will.
Yeah.
So we spent a lot of time socializing the topic, to make sure we weren't going to cause any challenges in the neighborhood.
Got it. I have no additional questions.
I didn't.
Laura? No? Okay, again, no phone calls, just make sure, and no electronic submissions? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, great, let's go to seeker.
Yeah, as, from a standpoint of seeker, I'd say this is a type 2, not requiring any additional actions.
Second, any further discussion on the seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As to the merits, I would, I would definitely say to approve. It would, this is going to improve the curb appeal of the house, it seems to be a nice way to kind of be able to pull some activities together with their neighbors. The neighbors on both sides have indicated that they are definitely for it, and unfortunately, the placement of the house has put them in a situation where they kind of need the variance in order to be able to put the porch on, so.
Or anything, very much.
All those taken into account, I would, I would recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck, I think it's going to look great.
It looks beautiful.
Now, I want to drive by when they're done, so I can see what it looks like.
Soon as I get my permit, Andy.
No pressure.
Well, I did submit the PE approved drawings today, so.
Good. All right, well, good luck, enjoy it. All right, number five.
Melissa Sharrow, 165 Y Cliff Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests approval for a conditional use, under section 250-13.3, and section 250-5.7-C1A of the code, to allow the operation of a restaurant, Busy Bean Cafe, at 2157 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Wegmans Food Markets Incorporated, and his own general business, SBL number 139.02-1-2.3. This is application number 23Z-0044.
Great.
Melissa Sharrow, 165 Y Cliff Drive.
Hi, Melissa, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, I have just a couple of questions, because you did such a good job. Hours of operation, what's the plan for Busy Bean Cafe in Penfield?
So we currently own a first location, it's in Victor, New York, as of right now. We are looking to match those hours and operations to, until we get the feel of Penfield, and otherwise, it's not going to be extended, hopefully too much different than what it is. We are open seven days a week, Monday through Friday, from 7:30 in the morning till 4:00 PM, and then Saturday and Sundays from 8:00 to 1:30 PM.
I assume with those hours, you're not looking to sell alcohol?
Yeah.
Or, okay. There have been a few other restaurants in that location, are you aware of any challenges with parking from the previous owners? There's a huge parking lot, but still, parking, in-grass, e-grass, any concerns that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. The previous owner that was in there before us, the Superfly, was only there six months, that I was told, and that was prior to COVID, so, they lost because of COVID. Outside of that, I haven't heard any other challenges.
Yeah, and I think Lynn Burgers was there previous, and, I mean, for years.
For years, yeah.
I didn't know of anything. As far as lighting, are you going to make any changes to the building's appearance on the outside that?
Outside, no, inside cosmetically. We're just going to update coloring that's inside, minor changes added in coffee bar, so I'm able to put my equipment outside. Kitchen will stay the same, tables will go in exact same spaces that the other location had. The sign is already going to fit into that tiny space, we matched the sizing and everything that the other space had. This place that we're working with is familiar with Wegmans Plaza, so they're familiar with the sizing and everything of the signage, so we made sure we stayed within correspondence of everything with that, too.
When would you be looking to open?
Just half. We actually are looking to get our, hopefully our lease back within the next week or so, so as long as that looks good and ready to go, hopefully by fall, by the end of fall time.
Very cool. And I assume all seating inside, there's nothing outside?
Yeah, we're not allowed per Wegmans, nothing that obstructs the, outside of the doorways. So it will be open, everything's inside.
Sounds good.
All right, anything, George?
No, sir.
Okay. No phone calls, no e-participation, what's your, what's your menu going to be like, just so for everybody here listening, future customers?
We serve, we serve breakfast and lunch, brunch, we serve breakfast all day, coffee, baked goods, we do like, popular items, a lot of potato-ish items, patinis, scratch made stuff, like I do, like, I like the 90s diner classic stuff, so we bring in like, BLTs and melts and sandwiches, so we're just a comfort.
I saw your website today, it's, it's a pretty cool website.
Thank you.
What's your most popular item in Victor?
As of right now, our banana bread french toast. I make it in-house, and I can't keep up with it, it's been fun.
How many people?
Paninis are the same thing, we sell paninis non-stop, so those are another lunch, fast go-to items, which are fantastic.
How many tables are you going to have inside?
It depends, so we're looking right now, if I can fit as many as I can within the amount we're allowed. I haven't really 100% been able to go in and measure everything, we're still working with Wegmans as far as that goes, we do have the layout, but as many as I can get in there, trying to do half-tables, half-booths, just so we can hit everybody, something that I'm not able to do in our first location. We have very strict codes where I'm at on the first one, so this is going to be, this is going to be a glorified space, and I'm going to love it. We have a kitchen in this one, the other one we, we do, but we don't, so.
All right, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, let's go ahead with the seeker.
I would make a motion that this request is a type 2 action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further action.
Second.
Okay, a seeker motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would, aye, sorry, I didn't say aye, aye. I would make a motion to approve, you know, it's, previously was an existing restaurant, not a lot of fundamental changes that are going to impact the e-grass, in-grass, the lighting, nothing that would have disruption to the neighborhood from a noise level perspective. I think that's.
It's in a plaza, plenty of parking.
Yeah.
Plenty of safe entrance exits, that's all good. All right, so we have a motion to approve, did we get a second? Second. And a third we got over here, too, okay, so I know how this is going to go. All right, a motion to approve in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you so much.
I'm excited, yes.
Welcome to Penfield.
Thank you.
Victor's nice, but Penfield's Penfield.
Thank you.
Oh, man, good for you. All right, moving along, number six.
Mark Agor, Agor Enterprises, 951 Panorama Trail South, Rochester, New York, 145, 14625. Requests approval for a special use permit, under section 250-14.3, and section 250-7.20-C of the code, to allow exterior storage containers at 951 Panorama Trail South. The property is currently or formerly owned by Lynn Agor, and his own limited industrial, SBL number 139.09-1-58. This is application number 23Z-0045.
Okay, may we have your name and address, please?
Mark Agor, 951 Panorama Trail South.
Okay, so your property is, you know, directions that way kind of messed me up a little bit, but as, as one is heading from, let's say, Penfield into East Rochester, you're past the Paychex headquarters, and kind of up on the hill.
Yep.
And can you let us, just describe your business for us?
A lot of different things, we do wheelchair accessible vans, conversion vans, and then in 2019, we opened a collision shop.
Okay, so, I gather that business is going well, and it's good, such that you need to free up some space in, in your building, and hence the reason for the storage?
A little bit of that, I mean, yes.
Yeah.
But also, supply shortages are crushing us, and have been.
Okay.
So when we can get stuff, we need to get it, and the problem is, now it takes floor space up, and, you know, it just, it's, things have been getting better there, but we definitely need more room for our people, and we also need more room for supplies.
Andy, go back where all the vans are shown, that was a really good view, okay.
Like, what are, what are the supplies? Am I, I just don't really know what?
Yeah, I mean, at lights, like, windows, just all different automotive parts.
Automotive parts.
Parts, okay.
So all the things that we'd need, we'd need for the conversions?
For conversions or collision parts, or whatever, I mean, it's, it has gotten better, but the thing is, we're growing, and, you know, it just, in the beginning, if you could get something, it was like, we'll take it all, because you don't know when you're not, you don't know when you're going to be able to get it again.
Yeah, I know, yes, I get it.
You got to keep people employed, and you got to keep doing that type of stuff, so it's been hard.
Yeah, so, I was, I'm going to still ask you, you know, why not just build an addition? But I think you've kind of said, you know, we don't know how long this is going to last, so to speak, but.
Well, so, why not build? Ultimately, we're not at that point, I agree.
Okay.
To build the square footage that we need is going to cost us a lot less money than storage containers.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
And then ultimately, we.
You mean a lot more money?
A lot less.
There's warehouse space, basically.
To build the warehouse is going to cost more than the storage container.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah. So, and we do have about 1.2 or 1 acres behind us, that's not on the 951 Panorama Trail, which eventually we'd like to build, but right now, it's a matter of, I mean, to be perfectly honest, you know, the last three years have been hard.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's money.
Sure. Okay, well, I get that. So what you're proposing is a temporary solution?
I would like personally, what we're wanting to do, is we're wanting to put a hole through the side of our building for a garage door, so I don't, like, I don't see it being temporary.
Okay, all right, there is a limit by code, I don't know if you guys had a conversation about that, with outdoor storage is limited to three years?
Right.
We don't have the discretion to grant it for any longer than that. But that doesn't mean you couldn't come back and say, I need, I'd like another three years.
Just to extend it.
In fact, I think that's happened before.
Okay.
So, so on that, can you show us where they're going to be? Because, you know, people drive by, whatever the speed limit is there, they go faster than it. So, the vans are cool, they're nice to see, there's car dealerships in the area, but, you know, how are these going to look from people on the road?
Personally, I don't think you're really going to see them.
Okay, that's what I figured as much, but.
You know, I don't, I mean, you're so high up there, you can't, I mean, if you want to see them, you're going to get in an accident.
Oh.
Right? I mean, because you're going to be, you know, you're going to have to look up and sideways.
Yeah.
In the front of the building, though, is that where you're going to put them, right where the arrow is?
Right, right up in there, yeah.
Okay. And what do they look like? Did we get pictures of those?
There are pictures of them.
Yeah, there was a picture in the, in the application.
I totally can't.
I'm not going to say they look like dumpsters, but they look like those big things on transport ships.
When you see the transport, I mean.
The cargo.
They look like cargo containers, exactly.
I totally, I just.
Yeah, there's one right there.
And will they, will they be like a gray to match your building? I mean.
We can do that, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Personally, I would like to do that, yeah.
Even though you can't, that's fine, and even though you can't see them, I would move for a restriction, that no advertising on them, I don't know that you would.
That's fine.
If it's, I guess, advertising from the manufacturer, or whatever that was, we see dumpsters all the time with, you know, Duke Company or whatever, but, you know, don't sell advertising space on them, like, that's what I'm saying. Okay, all right. I don't see any phone calls, I don't see any electronic submissions, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, well then, we'll move to its consideration, I'm going to make a motion to declare it a type 2 action, again, under seeker.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am going to make a motion to approve, I think, given the specific location, the property is in good shape, well-kept up, that the applicant will make sure that these don't become an eyesore. He now knows it's a three-year limit, that's the most, that would be my motion, to give him the three-year limit. So, you know, hopefully, we won't end that timeframe, hear of, or see any problems, but if we do, you know, address those as quickly as you can, so that when three years comes up, and if you want them again, it'll be just as quick as tonight.
Okay.
I don't anticipate anything, but, you know, we have, haven't seen them in a while, but the horse stables, the horse stables are three years, aren't they, or four, whatever?
Well, yeah.
Whatever they are, there's some time, there's horse stables in Penfield, and folks do a good job of dealing with the issues as they arise, so that when they come in for renewal, they're pretty routine at this point, so.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my motion, I would just tack on that no advertising condition. Any?
Second.
I would just add to the, your, that this is a really commercial area, there's no housing around it that's.
Some temporary housing across the street.
There's actually temporary housing up the back hill.
On that hill, too?
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right, so we have a motion to approve in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Who's the second?
George.
Thank you.
All right, number seven.
Christopher and Tracy Smith, 28 Hickory Pond Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance, under section 250-14.3 of the code, to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required, under section 250-5.1-F12B of the code, at 1745 Suites Corners Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Chris and Tracy Smith, and his own RA-2, SBL number 126.01-1-32.2. This is application number 23Z-0046.
Okay, may we have your name and address, please?
Yep, Christopher Smith, 1745 Suites Corners Road.
Great, all right, well, Chris, thank you for the application, it certainly was thorough, was able to get a very good idea of what was going on. I had to take a drive out, so I could, could see what the property looked like, and to see what the other properties in the particular area were. I've got a couple of questions to start, but why don't you walk us through a little bit about the intended use of the building, and your rationale for the placement?
Yeah, so initially, I was unaware of the increased setback that goes to 50 feet when the building increases, and I think it's 300 square feet.
Yeah, 300 square feet or less, it's 10 feet, and then, yeah, after you.
Yeah. In hindsight, I actually don't think that would have changed anything, because of the other factors that are requiring us to apply for the variance, but, so the building itself would be used for storage, we have two boats, so we'd like to put those in there, and then, We have two boats, so we'd like to put those in there, and then, like lawn equipment, things like that. It would basically serve as, put the boats in there, tools, things like that, lawn equipment. It would serve as a shed also, you know, what most people would put in a lawn shed would go in there.
Gotcha. So, the rationale behind the placement, I see that you've got some septic systems, and you've got some, you know, other infrastructure you've put there.
Yeah.
Was the plan for the shed in place when you put that infrastructure in?
No, it was not. That came after. We always planned to put one up. We didn't plan to put it up as part of this project when the house was being built. It was something that we figured would come later, but with the builder, we just started talking about it, and so, so after we got the building permit for the house and things like that, and it was already under construction, that's when the pole barn idea came up, well, to build it sooner. That drawing doesn't show everything, there's other systems that are in there. So, you've got the septic system there, that's all proposed. I do have an updated survey of, I don't know if you want me to bring it up?
Yeah, you go bring it up, yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Yeah, so they surveyed the house now as it is. It's not proposed, it shows, you know, just the septic, but...
And you can get a copy of this to Andy as well?
I have it right up. I think I have the same one up here on the screen.
Oh, is it, do you have the same one up? Okay, all right, so...
So, if you look at that, there's other things that aren't shown on there. So, we've got the septic system there. That is restricting how far over we can go, even if, even if it was smaller, I wouldn't be able to go over far enough. Behind the house, kind of approaching the east property line, or what's on top here, there's a geothermal ground loop that goes back towards the south, towards that rock pile that you see in the far back of the lot. I don't know if you guys see, in the back corner there?
Oh, back here.
Yeah, so there's a ground loop that goes from the house towards that rock pile, it kind of wraps down that property line. And then also on that side, it's a, it's a gravity sump, so the line for the sump also goes down that side. And then in the front, the front yard is, it's kind of lower, and there's a swell that goes around the east side. It all goes downhill on the east side.
Yeah, I did see that when I drove out there. So, so now, we're going to ask some of the obvious questions, and we, of course, always, our goal is to limit the variances where necessary. So, the first question is, is there any reason that the, you actually answered that, you can't put it on the other side of the property because of the geothermal line that you've had installed?
There's a lot going on there.
Could you downsize the size of it to at least reduce the footprint and still meet the needs of the storage and the two boats?
We could downsize, obviously, we could go as small as needed. That would cause problems trying to get two boats in there at that point with everything else that we want to put in there.
So, just to interrupt you.
Yeah.
It's, when he says downsize, his intent is downsize to shrink the size of the variance you need.
Correct.
So, he's not saying...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Downsize it so you can't use it for your intended purpose. What's, can you reduce the variance and still have it serve the purpose you need to? Even by four feet, five feet, six feet?
Yeah, so I, we did ask the builder and the engineer about that, because the engineer came out to, the builder wouldn't touch it because of the location of the septic system. They said, we want the engineer to come back out, verify where this is, and verify where the pole barn can go in relation to that. They said the concern there was the runoff from the pole barn, and they didn't want to go any closer to the septic system, because they had a hard time getting it to perk as it was. I think they dug, they dug a couple of holes initially, and then they finally got it to perk and it passed. So, we initially actually wanted the house further off the road, but the location of the septic system was fixed at that point. That's where they got it to work, and so we went back as far as we could, not as far as we wanted. So, yeah, unfortunately, we did ask them, I mean, how far over can you go? And that was, that was, they didn't want to go any further.
Yeah, that was, that was an auxiliary question I did have, was the, normally, septic system placement is purely based on the ability for that particular portion of the property to allow for the...
Yeah.
Okay, so you probably were limited, okay.
Yeah, it drove a lot of things. Like I said, we didn't even want to be that close to the road, but that kind of fixed it there.
Gotcha, okay, so that addresses those questions. Now, it did, it did come up, I believe, that you perhaps own property adjacent to this?
East side, yes.
So, I'll ask the obvious question, any reason that the, this pole barn couldn't be put on that property?
Could it be? Yes. That property's being farmed, it's under a lease agreement.
Yeah, I did notice, and they farmed right up to the property, man, I got to give that farmer credit, he didn't waste one.
No.
Yeah.
What lot are you talking about? It's the lot two?
We are on lot two.
It's where the hand, well, move it over once.
That's where the house is?
That's where the house is, lot one is the other lot, yeah.
So, you own that, but you lease it to a farmer?
Right.
That whole lot one is all one lot?
Correct, yeah, yep. We also wanted it positioned at the, at the end of the driveway, so that, you know, easy access, it would be easy to get into it from the house. If we moved it all the way over to the other lot, that's pretty far away from the house.
Yeah, understood, but what we're looking for is a way to kind of compromise, and if I can figure out a way for you and I to work so that no variance is necessary, that's our optimal, but in...
Yeah.
In this case, is that, is that a possibility to move it on that property? You talk to that farmer, maybe get him agreement for it?
He would be fine with it, I'm sure of that, but that, that really wouldn't suit our purposes, no.
Okay.
Just because of the distance?
The distance, yeah, I mean, it's really, it's really serving as a detached garage. I mean, to put it all the way over there wouldn't be practical for us.
It would also require an additional subdivision, because you can't have the building on a lot by itself. It would have to be on the same lot as the house.
Gotcha, so that would require, okay, yeah, so that's a whole nother series of hassles. So, now, I did drive out there, I did, and I am going to come back to the question about you being able to downsize it a little bit in order to, because I'm pretty tenacious that way, but I did take a drive out there. I do note that there are, there's quite an interesting variety of properties out there. There are farms that have large barns, there are, the building, the house across the street has a very significant size outbuilding itself as well, that I did note. So, it's, this isn't completely, without keeping to the general area that you are, and it is very rural out there, but there's also, I noted, a lot of new homes being built out there, there's some new neighborhoods, so we kind of have to balance that. So, I'm going to go back to the question, any chance you could downsize the building enough so that we could reduce the variance a little bit, and perhaps address some of the concerns that were raised by, we did get some correspondence, so...
The building could be downsized, I don't, you know, relatively speaking, I don't know how much we would gain doing that. I mean, if we gained five feet, is it really a big gain?
Well, it depends who you ask.
Yeah.
What, the point that George is making is, one of the factors we have to consider anytime anybody asks for an area variance is whether or not the variance requested is substantial. What does substantial mean? Well, you know, get a dictionary and look it up. We can, you're supposed to be 50 feet from the line, you're asking to be 10 feet from the line. So, where I'm sitting, that's substantial, 80%, whatever the numbers show. So, would five feet make a difference? Yeah, two feet would make a difference. 25 feet would make a bigger difference.
Yeah.
But then, you're not using it for what you want.
Right, I'm trying to find a compromise here, so I understand, I understand that you, you need to be able to put a certain amount of equipment in there, and you've got some limitations on the property. To be honest, some of those are self-created, but I do understand that in some cases, like the septic system, which you have to put in, you've got to put it where the property will allow it to work, so there's a balance there. So, I'll come back to the question, if, you know, if you're willing to size it down even a little bit and lower the variance, that would, that would certainly be to your advantage.
And I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but...
No, go right ahead, Dan.
Before you answer that, if you need to consult with somebody, we can come back next month.
Yeah.
So, I don't want you to feel like you got to give an answer.
Yeah, I'm not trying, not putting you on the hot seat, but I'm trying to plant some ideas of ways that, and I also would like to, unless you have any other questions, then I'd kind of like to have, if he can, address the correspondence we got from the neighbor.
If you've even seen it.
Yep, and if you had a chance to talk to the neighbor.
Email, is that where you're...
Yes.
Yeah, yes, I did, yeah, I saw that. I do have a copy of that. I don't, do you want to just go through it from number one?
Yeah, you can go through it, and I think there's four points or whatever they are, so...
Um, yeah, so the first point was the variance request is excessive, given these owner encryments like we talked about.
Yeah.
I mean, my response to that was that excessive is really a matter of opinion. It certainly is valid if he thinks it's excessive.
Well, I mean, I'm going to defer to Dan, but, you know, from our perspective, 10 to 40 is, that's, that is, from our perspective, that is all, we would consider that excessive.
I got that, from the other applications, I got the impression that mine was a little more significant.
Okay, fair enough, continue.
Okay, so that's that one. Penfield Planning Board approved this site for the owners part of a subdivision application. At that point in time, there's no mention of the construction of a pole barn, that's true. Given that the lot's 2.82 acres, topography of the site, septic leach field trenching for the geothermal, 200-foot lot width, the size of the parcel limits what can be constructed at the site, so the variance seems like a self-imposed hardship. I would almost say that all of those reasons are the reason it's not self-imposed.
So, you want to build it.
Yeah.
So, it is self-imposed, but I hear you, because you have all these hurdles. I think a key point there is, and you may have already addressed this, when you were in planning board, asking for this and all these things, and working with your engineers, did you know you were going to be sitting in zoning board asking for a 40-foot variance? I think that's what the issue is, right. So, that's, that's what you're saying tonight, is when you ask for the subdivision, and you're taking care of the geo-whatever and all that other stuff, you're not thinking, I'm doing all this stuff so I can go on zoning board and make my case for a variance?
Did not realize that, no, not at the time, yeah.
All right, that's, you can go to number three.
I'm sorry, say it again?
You can go to number three.
Okay. All right, so we did talk about that. I just wrote, yes, we do own the lot adjacent to the property, currently under lease. There would definitely be time, money required to re-engineer our, the lot that we live on to extend our property line over. We did not want a lot that big, for reasons, financial reasons, we did not want to go bigger. We went, 200 feet was the minimum, and that's what we were going to be at. So, it, that almost seemed maybe excessive or impractical to make our yard bigger, to put a pole barn on the other property line, which isn't practical for its intended purpose for being, you know, served as a detached garage, essentially. Plus, for all the reasons stated, we can't put it over there anyway, I think, because of the swell that goes through there, because of the geothermal loop that's there, because of the sump drain line that goes through there. You mentioned using the other property, that would eliminate those factors, but create...
Yeah, as Andy indicated, you would need to get the rezoned, right, the, not rezoned, but you'd get to have, get the property line moved and...
Something like...
Yeah, I'm not sure of the details, huh?
And then you have the practical problem of having that far from you.
Yeah, it might even be a use variance.
So, we would be going, we'd be going from one variance to another, basically?
Unless he were to subdivide the property to contain it all within the same property, right?
Gotcha, okay, understood.
Number four, by granting this requested variance, the current or future owner of the lot to the west potentially would be negatively impacted by the variance. My response to that was basically, this is a rural area, it's full of barns, I don't, I don't know what, in particular, what negative impact there would be to anybody else.
Yeah, I would grant you that, having, yeah, having driven out there, I would grant you that, there are pole barns on other properties, no doubt. I think, I think in this case, it is the placement of the barn, of the pole barn that is the challenge to the front, because it's much closer to the road and more visible than, than the neighbors, so, okay. Go ahead, Laura.
I don't have any questions, but I don't know if there's other people...
Well, if you don't have them, you comment or something, it sounded like you wanted to say something.
I know.
I was referring to you before we...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
Dan, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just, clearly, out in that area town, there are a lot of large acreage lots and homes, and there are a lot of pole barns and barns and big outbuildings, no doubt about that. So, what George just said, I'm, I totally agree with, it's not, you're not here asking for a variance about the size of the barn. Your variance is, because it's too close. So, we've talked about, can you move it, can you shrink it? The point about future owners, that's, that's true, but at the same time, anybody that buys that is going to see the pole barn. So, we're not going to buy it because the pole barn's that close, maybe, but they'll, before they sign on the dotted line, they will have seen the pole barn and decide whether or not they can live with it.
So, have you talked to the owner of the property that you would be butting up against?
Yeah, well, I sent two emails, we went back and forth on email a little bit, and then I talked to her, she was actually on her way to, I think, a birthday party, she said, and we talked to her kind of in the street a little bit right there.
Oh, I think, I think she's actually here, so, okay.
Yes, that is the owner.
Well, then, there you go.
All right, answered my own question.
All right, so again, I don't know if you're prepared to even think about shrinking it to reduce the size of the variance. You're probably not going to be able to move it very much, but can you shrink it to reduce the size of the variance? And give that some thought while we open it up to other folks in the, in the room. All right, so I'll do just that. Anybody in the room care to speak about this? Okay, come on up and give us your name and...
My name is Cynthia Rice, I live at 1720 Suites Corners Road.
Have a seat.
I was going to hand out something, so I'll give you my name, so that I could then be able to give you this.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like I'm being given a test.
So, while you're looking this over, I just want to first say, this isn't how I want to, like, welcome our neighbors, but I also have a lot of emotion around this. I mean, this is a property, 1720, my family's been there 120 years. I bought the land to the west to protect what the integrity of that area is. And I would ask you to look at some of the photos here. A 10-foot setback is the space between my property line and the edge of that outhouse, 10 feet. In front of that outhouse is my driveway. My driveway lines up with where that outhouse was. And then 10 feet to the west is my property line on the other side of the street. So, I am here to advocate for the enforcement of our existing regulations related to the construction of large barns or sheds. And I would also say, yep, it's true, we've got barns, but they are within the zoning regulations. And so, I'm here because I feel badly, I mean, the Smiths purchased 54 acres, and they ended up in that space, and the land, this has all been a perking issue. So, I feel like there was a lot of decisions here, and this is a result of it. We've got the construction of the house, but now we're asking for a variance because of the perking situation. And so, I have to say I'm strongly opposed to that variance being granted.
Okay, if it were a five-foot variance request, would you be as strongly opposed?
You mean, so that it would be 45 feet back?
Away.
Yes. I mean, not as opposed, no.
Right, so it's, it's a matter of degree.
It's about the 40 feet, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I just wanted to make sure I understand your point, it's a matter of degree, yes.
It moves it completely west of the house.
Yeah.
Not behind the house.
Understood, understood. And, you know, sometimes we handle, we try to handle variance requests with buffering. I just don't, that doesn't seem very practical here, because it's such a large building, but, okay, any other questions?
And just for verification, you live across the street?
I live across the street, and I own the land that abuts the property. I am the western neighbor.
Gotcha, okay, understood. Just, because you, because you were talking about your driveway being lined up, I'm like, okay.
That's right, yeah, I know, because I'm across the street. Which is, you know, longer story, which is why I was trying to protect that area in the first place.
Oh, one thing that I should ask, because you have neighbors here, is, and I, I'm asking this as much for everybody's benefit as yours, if this is denied, and you find you can't, because of that denial, you can't build it, where are you going to store the Okay, so you, it's not your intent to store it outside on the property?
One will be stored in the driveway, but I said we have two, so one will have to go into...
Okay. I ask that because I want you to be aware of the alternative as well, and I don't, I, that's why I brought it out, because I know people don't like seeing boats outside, or RVs, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, we didn't want to do that, we were trying to get...
No, I get it, I get it. Okay, anything else to add?
That's it. That's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak about this? Come on up.
Sure, I'll warm the seat up for you, thanks. My name's Randy Makoski. I live at 1715 Sweets Corners Road. That would be the property, two properties to the west of Mr. Smith's property.
Can I just have you spell your last name?
Sure. M-A-K-O-S-K-I.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, that little square you're looking at there, 1715 Sweets Corners Road. I really don't have a whole lot to add. I would just like to reiterate some of the points that have been made by Cindy and the, and the letter that was written. The ordinances that you have in the town for setbacks, for buildings of this size, are there for a reason. And I, I know it's a, an infringement on that property due, you know, due to the west, and there are a lot of barns out there. I have a barn myself, but it's obviously within the, within the variant, or within the ordinance size. And if, the fact that there's a lot of property to the east that Mr. Smith does own, I think there's a lot of opportunity there to fit his needs within what the needs of the town are.
Would you elucidate on that a little bit? You've heard him talk about how it would be, from his perspective, so impractical, he wouldn't do it. Do you have, do you disagree with that? If you have ideas, that'd be great.
Well, there, there's a 2.8-acre lot that the house is on now.
Yeah.
There's 22 acres to the east.
Right.
Okay. If you expanded that, that 2.8 acres to a five-acre lot, similar to the size that I have, the pole barn could go on that property, and it wouldn't be that far away from the house.
Okay.
My, my barn is, I don't know, 80 feet away from my house. It's a little bit of a walk, but I need the exercise, so.
Okay, okay.
I, I think there's opportunity there to meet both needs, the needs of Mr. Smith and what the town requires from a ordinance perspective.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's all I got.
Any other questions for this gentleman?
No, not at this point. It would be beneficial if, to understand exactly what the impact, if he were to consider moving the property line. I mean, what, what are we talking about from a standpoint of level of effort to do that, just so we, so we understand the impact to Mr. Smith? If he, if he's going to go that route, I don't think it's a wave of a pen. I think there's some effort around it. Could you give us some indication, Andy, of what that would be?
Oh, it would require review by the planning board. An engineer would have to reestablish the, the proposed property lines, switch, or whatever. Not sure exactly what the cost of all that would be.
So, that would be the additional, the, the time, there would be the, the addition of an additional driveway that would be necessary to, to, I'm just trying to understand what we're, what we're proposing. And then there would be, I'm assuming, a change in the, the tax, if, how the house is taxed versus how the empty property is taxed?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I don't have any additional questions, thank you. I just wanted to kind of understand what we were, what we were proposing to Mr. Smith, so.
As part of the reason why it needs 50, 50 setback is because of the size of the overall, if, so not only just shrinking the, it would not only reduce potentially where he could put it, but then...
Have to reduce the square footage so much to get to the 10-foot setback.
It would, I didn't know how much. How much is it?
It's a lot. It wouldn't...
Yeah, yeah, he, I don't think he would be getting two boats in the building if he were...
I didn't know what the actual number was.
Not even close.
So, we're still always going to be working within the 50 setback, it's just a matter of how much you can reduce that by.
Yeah.
I, I don't have any additional questions at this time, but, you know, certainly with the, with the information from both Mr. Smith and from the neighbors, I mean, I think there's, there's room here for some, I think there needs to be some additional discussion and some looking at the options, but...
Well, I think there are other folks that want to speak.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
Sorry. You're welcome. Thank you for coming. I don't have any phone calls or electronic submissions yet. Hello?
Hi, I'm Diane Wilkett. I live at 1661 Sweets Corners Road, and I'm here because of the size of the variance from 10 feet to 50 feet, to me is a 500% increase, or decrease, however you want to look at it. My understanding is Mr. and Mrs. Smith bought 54.21 acres of land two years ago. They decided to sell lots. They decided what size to sell the lot. They decided to have a 2.8 acre for their own home, whereas they could have had a larger size acreage for their house. They knew they were putting in geothermal. They knew about the perk test. They did it about a year ago. I was around walking. I saw them doing on the west side, I saw them doing on the east side, up in the property over by the cemetery. From listening to Mr. Smith, it sounds like they already owned two boats. So, they knew when they built out here that they wanted more storage. They built a two-car garage. They have three kids. How do you put in the toys, the bikes, two cars, lawn equipment, and everything else in a two-car garage? So, the fact that now he wants, and I think I looked at the information, it came through maybe May of this year, now they want to build a 1,200-square-foot pole barn. How come they didn't know this two years ago when they wanted to build their own property? They decided to have a small lot, and if that's to save some tax dollars, and now they want to ask for a variance to go from 10 feet to 50 feet, that's a large increase. I also have a barn. My barn isn't attached to the house. I have to walk a distance to the barn. That's how it is sometimes. But they made these decisions. They made the geothermal, the perk test, where their garages, the narrowness of the current driveway. Those are all decided by them and their engineer and their builders. And now they're coming to the town and want such a significant change.
Everything that you're saying is the reasons I asked him the questions about what was on his, their mind when they were doing the subdivision. So, it's, that's, it's a fair question. We can give him another opportunity to address those if you choose to do so. But, the point, point is well taken. I, I don't know any of the pole barns in the area, whether any of them have variances or not. It'd be nice to know that at some point, we can look at that, if it goes beyond tonight.
Well, I should clarify. I don't have a pole barn. I have an 18 forges barn, and you can't move that, so.
Right, right. And it may have been there before the code anyway. I don't know, but...
Well, the house was built in 1914.
Yeah, then, most likely.
The buyer was there before the code.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, I'm sorry, what's your last name again?
W-O-L-C-O-T-T.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michelle McNutt, 1740 Sweets Corners Road. I don't have anything very much to say, other than what I already has. They decided to purchase the property without getting perk verification, so they were hogtied, because it only perked in one place. They must have dug 17 holes. I watched them dig it, because I live right across the street. So, they had to put their house there, but they didn't have to go to the bare minimum width of their property, which is what is driving this variance. They bought 54 acres. They kept very little of that property, probably for tax reasons. And the variance is very large. The only suggestion that I would have is, could they make their driveway longer and put it further back on the property, past the leach field? That way, they could move it to the code of 50 feet away from that property line to the west. They could keep their driveway. They just need to put in more driveway. They would avoid the leach field, and they could keep the size of the barn. But then, it's not, it's in your face. I also have a barn, so I'm one of those properties. We have a barn, but ours is 150 feet from the house. It, I mean, it isn't right there. It's a walk to the barn, and we have a hill to get down there and a hill to go back. So, that would be my only ask, is, could they consider putting it behind the septic field and then further to the east, more behind the house, to meet that compromise that I know, George, you were asking him for?
Under that scenario, I imagine the, you would, if you were to do that, you would extend the gravel driveway all the way back there. And I don't know, if you were to do that, I, I imagine, as I said, that the driveway would, I don't know if you can put the driveway that close to the field or not, especially if you're hauling stuff. But that's, that's a fair question, a fair point, and it'd be nice to know whether that, whether you could even do that.
Yeah, so based on the, I mean, it looks like, I'm just looking at the drawing here, it looks like if, to do that, they would have to, if, if the septic field is already in, they would have to run that driveway literally right along the property line to avoid the, to avoid the field.
Go around it, yeah.
Yeah, so then that would pose the question, would the other neighbor who owns that property be frustrated if there was a driveway that was but up? And what variance is necessary for the driveway?
Driveway is allowed to go right up to the property line.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I guess I would ask the, and I, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, ma'am.
Cindy.
Cindy Bush. How, what would you feel about having the driveway run and then that, that barn to the back part of the property, as, as she recommended?
I feel like I'm answering a double jeopardy question. Certainly moves the barn further away from the property line, which is good. I'm, I'm actually thinking about watching traffic go all the way across the field, back and forth. I just don't know how much, how much is going to get used, you know, if it's light, lightly going back. It's really storage, and so you're back there seasonally. You're not really back there every single day. I don't know.
Does it sound like you need a variance?
Well, I mean, if, I think quite frankly, if the driveway can run along the property line, and you were to move the building 50 feet away from the property line, if he's within code, it's not an issue at that point.
Right.
He can put the building in at that point. So, is that something you would consider?
Well, I guess we would consider anything we had to consider.
Yeah, and, and, again, I don't want to cut anybody off. I, all you folks that have spoken have made valid points, and you've done it eloquently. I think we know the issues. Sort of back in your court, you can say to us, "My application is what it is. Please take a vote." I want you to know, because we are missing two members tonight, that any vote we take has to be unanimous.
Okay.
It's not two out of three. It's, you need all three. That's the law. We don't, we don't control that. So, even a motion to table is going to require three votes. But, again, you've heard a lot of this tonight for the first time. You've heard us say that we share concerns.
Yeah.
But, as with the other applicants tonight, we do try to work with folks, including neighbors, to see if there is something that, you know, we can leave everybody maybe not happy, but maybe, you know, content is a better word. So, I would, I ultimately, I'm going to make a motion to table. And I know that sets you back a month. That's a pain in the neck. I get that as well. For you to have more conversations with your professionals, your family, you know, maybe you'll have a conversation, you'll come back, say, "I'm withdrawing it, because I'm going to put it where, where it says Lot 2, and we're going to be driving," you know, who knows? Or maybe you'll come back and say, "I can't change it. It doesn't, nothing serves our, our purpose." I, I'm trying to make sure that, you know, don't anybody take offense at this question, but, you know, if you were to purchase property to the west, would that, and therefore eliminate, you know, move your boundary line? That would take a process, but I don't know if that conversation's shaking or I'd know, so.
I, the original, the original purchase was meant to be 16 acres, and because of the way the lot got divided, I ended up with 13.86. I have no interest in watching that boundary moved.
Okay, well, that, that was an easy, quick answer. Okay. But in any event, so as I said, I'm going to make a motion to table, because there's, there's a lot to consider here, and it's important to you, it's important to everybody here. So...
I'll second that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Let's just say theoretically, we went to the east side, but I would require a variance, and I own that land. I'm, I don't believe that would get approved either, because most of the people that spoke don't even have property adjacent to this. So, there would be an issue with me even getting a variance to a property that I own.
Well, so let's, let's, not necessarily, but a possibility. We, it's hard for us to say, without actually seeing an application, how we feel about it. But...
And why would you need a variance, though? Why would you need to put it so close, I guess? I understand why you need to put it so close to the property line as it is right now, because of what it's situated. On the east side, you wouldn't even need a variance, because...
Yeah, he's got, he's got the geothermal line that runs.
Where's the, run it again?
It's right on the property line.
It runs horizontal?
Yeah, the dotted line right on top of that screen. But, but again, that's something for you to look at.
Yeah.
Pull out, you know, sharpen your pencil, sit down and say, "Okay, if I were to do this and, and put it there." I don't think you're going to get anything physically close to the house, the way that you want, and that most people would want.
Yeah.
You know, I appreciate getting your steps in, but if you can have your boat and your barn right there, I think most people are going to want that. So, that's not an unreasonable desire in a vacuum, but we're not in a vacuum, so. I want to give you a last chance to address any of these things. You'll have, we'll have more discourse next month as well.
No, I mean, I think you said it's not getting approved, obviously, so...
Right.
That's probably it for tonight, then.
But it's not getting denied either. It's getting tabled. So, will, will folks be coming back? Well, I'm like, let me just make a motion to table.
Second.
For the reasons stated. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, we're coming back next month to get more information from the applicant about, you know, some of these ideas, good ideas that we've had. Are they doable, and are they desirable?
And in that time period, you can either make a change?
Hmm.
Or not?
Right, yeah. Okay. I, I don't want you to feel any pressure from anybody. People are in, you know, they, they're property owners. They're entitled to come in. They're your neighbors. And that you think, I'm sure it wasn't easy for anybody to come in and do this. But, we have a job to do, and, and we'll do it.
Yep.
So, if you have any other questions about specifics or data or anything like that, Andy's great, help you with that. Same with you folks, if you have any other thoughts or, you're more than welcome to come back. Yes?
Next question.
Sure.
The septic system and the leach lines...
Ma'am, could you come up and use the microphone? You can have to speak in the mic, yeah. Good, good point, Andy.
So, is the septic system and the leach lines directly behind the house, or are they behind the house and the garage?
I think they're, if you, can you see the, the drawing? It should be up on the screen there?
Uh-huh.
That's where the...
And then the garage, you see where it says garage, and...
Yeah, so it's behind the garage and a good portion of the house, looks like it.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so then we have a motion to table, and, a second, we took a vote, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, it's table till next month, and we appreciate everybody's time and effort. And I think that was the last application, right?
Yes.
So, we'll see you next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.